Welcome to the November twenty-third, five-thirty PM City Council Presentations Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag. Which is right there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
The following is the public comment procedure for the City Council meeting at five-thirty. This is a City Council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Council will not take any formal action on the agenda items at this meeting. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. No sign-up card is required, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the table in this meeting room.
Thank you very much. City Manager, special recognitions and presentations, please.
Yes, sir. We're on item, Agenda Item Number Four A, and this is infill development. And Mr. Brad Parrish will present issues related to developing on infill lots. And Brad, floor is yours.
Thank you. I have a short presentation to give you about an issue that the staff has been dealing with for the past couple of years. Actually, it's been longer than that, but we really want to bring this up with two case studies that we have identified that we think would be of interest to you. And we generally are just going to ask for some comments. We have not given you any direction or advisability on your next, on your regular agenda to ask you any particular direction yet, but based on your comments, we'll come back to you with a possible advisability with a solution that may be resolved, this issue that I'm going to bring up to you today's evening. So, there is a community need. There's a definite need for affordable housing in the city, and that's true throughout central Florida. This is stated in our comprehensive plan, and it's stated in several other strategies and policies that the council has adopted. There's a definite need for what's called missing middle. The type of housing development that we typically get, and primarily in central Florida, is detached single-family subdivisions or multifamily developments, such as garden-style apartment complexes. But what we're missing, and what a lot of communities and a lot of planners around the country are identifying as missing middle, are those types of developments that are town homes, triplexes, duplexes, the kind of housing that is generally more affordable than the apartment complexes or single-family homes, but are generally not built. And so, a lot of communities have restrictive zoning as well that prevents a lot of these things, too. There is a definite opportunity to allow this type of housing at maybe higher density in some areas, especially in those areas that are identified as infill lots. This is not redevelopment of property. This is about property that is skipped over. They are vacant. They have the infrastructure there already, such as water and sewer. The roads are right there. There may be two subdivisions built near each other, but between them, there might be a large parcel or a relative, a medium-sized parcel that has been skipped over and hasn't been developed on for several years, maybe. And our comp plan actually identifies it as typically something that might have been looked over for twenty years. I'm going to show you an example of an apartment development that we got through the site development process, and this is for an affordable housing project. The zoning on the property had, is multifamily zoning. The number of units that were proposed in this particular development were ten residential units in two different buildings. The property itself is less than an acre. There used to be buildings on this prop, particular property in this case that I'm going to give to, show you. More than ten years ago, there used to be, I think, about twenty units on this property, and it was condemned, destroyed, and the city took over the property and deeded it over to an agency that was going to put affordable housing units on it. They went through the process, and every iteration that was given to us, every layout of the design for this new development, required variants of some sort. So, no matter what they did, they could not meet the code the way it was written. And this was for half of the residential units that were originally on the property prior to the zoning was placed on the property. The site plan process from beginning to end with the variances that were processed before the Board of Adjustment took about twelve months or more to deal with this. And that's something that probably shouldn't have taken maybe half that time, at most. The property is in an area that is primarily an older portion of the city. I've shown this to you in previous presentations where there's two types of development patterns in the city. There's one that's the core area, the downtown, the area to the west of the downtown, it's primarily gridded blocks. And then there's area, other areas outside of that that are more suburban style, and have large arterial roads with single accessways to subdivisions sprouting off of that. This is in one of those areas where traffic can be easily dispersed and can definitely accommodate a higher density in this area. But the way the code is written right now, it does make it very difficult to apply, to allow this kind of development there, because in my, I mean, in my mind, the way the code is written is more for suburban-style-type development pattern and not for this older development pattern that we initial, that we have here in this part of the city. The drawing on the left side is what was initially submitted to us for three different buildings to allow ten residential units with an onsite parking lot. And it included, it was required to adhere to the twenty-foot landscape buffer requirements along the right-of-way, which would have screened this development from the right-of-way. And these are local roads. These are not arterial roads or collector roads like Cheney Highway or Barnet Avenue. The drawing on the right side was what was initially, finally approved by the, with variances before the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. And the units were consolidated into two residential buildings where the front doors are facing out onto the local street. That required a significant number of variances to landscape requirements, to building setbacks. Also, these properties had old alleyways, unimproved alleyways on there, and so they eventually had to get those vacated as well. Parking is on-street. They, through an agreement with the city, we, in this approval process, we were able to allow them to have the parking requirements on the street, and so the city will be, so they're in the public right-of-way as opposed to being on the site itself. And that reduced a lot of the requirements for impervious surfaces and stormwater requirements to, when we allowed that. But all of that had to be done through the variance process. Another project I, the second case I wanted to bring to you is a townhome development. And this is actually still in review, and it started in two thousand nineteen. The townhome development is going to, they were proposing twenty-eight residential units, two-story townhomes. They're all market rate. This is not an affordable housing project. The zoning on the property is R-three, which is multifamily. They actually had to go through and ask for your permission, your permission to adopt an ordinance to allow this multifamily development inside that zoning district, because it originally did not allow it because of the minimum-size lot requirement. Our code originally said it had to have five acres to allow townhome development. You adopted an ordinance, I believe, last year to allow something more flexible on smaller lots. So again, this property is only about two-point-nine acres. Several variances were required in order to allow this development to continue forward. And again, the application is still under review. It's in the second review of a site plan review. And so, it should be completed soon, but then it will have to go through a plat process as well. This development is on the southeast corner of Whispering Hills and Elizabeth Avenue. The first iteration of this development showed the garages and driveways of each of these units going out onto these two local roads. We were able to work with the developer to reorient it, the buildings, so they'll have garages internal to the, to the site. So in other words, you see the roadway on, on the image on the right side, you see the roadway in there that's going to serve each of those garage units, and then the front doors of these units will face out onto the local road. So this is what you'll see when you go down Elizabeth Avenue now, and there's a single-family home on the, on the right side of that image there. And this is just something we superimposed on a similar townhome development in another part of the state where we put it onto this site to see what it could potentially look like with the front doors oriented towards the street. If the code was applied literally, this, you would not see this. You would have, you would see a landscape screen along there and all of the units internal to the site. The developer wanted, again, they wanted to put the driveways out onto the local street, which had required variances. We worked with the developer on this with several iterations, and every version they gave to us would have required some variances, administrative waivers and such. So they went through those processes, and they are almost complete. Some conclusions about this. The code could better align with affordable housing comp plan policies. There are several policies in our comprehensive plan that really talk about affordable housing, making it flexible for affordable housing, and making it a priority and making it, the review of it expedited in some way, always on the top of the list. We believe that there are some buffer and setback requirements. Those are just some of the requirements. There are others as well that are related, that are zoning-related, that are inflexible, and that there are few infill development incentives other than just expedited review. So with that, I'll try and answer any questions you have about this. Again, we do not have a direction for you. We can come back to you with an advisability that, with a specific direction.
Number four. Member Jordan.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I guess my first question would be, and I like the concept of doing this, and I really think we need a lot more flexibility, but I'm more concerned about the single-family homes like you have on Elizabeth Street and what the neighbors would think about putting something like that on there. Is there any experience with that in other cities that says this is an acceptable way of doing it? Because most of the time you hear, hey, I didn't come into this neighborhood to have, you know, multifamily next to me.
That's true. There, this particular case did go through the public hearing process. The surrounding neighbors were informed about the variances that were coming forth. They did, there was an opportunity for the public to see the project. It also had to go through a sketch plat process. We did not, we did receive some concern from the public when the applicant attempted to do a public meeting, but a lot of the concerns were alleviated. There were, however, there are some people who are concerned about a single-family home with, next to a multifamily. That's no doubt about that. We do have examples in our city where you see duplexes, triplexes adjacent to single-family in a master plan setting. La Cita is a great example. There's several streets there that have all types of housing along the same street. And there are many other examples around the state, too, that have done this as well and successfully incorporated both types of housing in the same development, the same neighborhood. I think it's imperative that we, we look at our land development code and our zoning regulations to make sure it works.
Yeah, I guess the, just to push back a little bit, when you have an older area, it, I think it would probably be harder for people to accept it versus a La Cita development where it's planned to do it. So I guess the, I guess I would just have a little concern about doing something like that. Certainly, you've got to have the people's input. And then, of course, my ultimate question would be, if I'm in that, if it's next to me, I, my house has been there thirty years, you've got this vacant lot, you want to put these things here, what is it going to do to the value of my home? Is it a positive or negative to have something like that next to it?
I think it really depends on how it's designed. So it really comes down to what the code says. I mean, you obviously don't want something very tall next to a single-family home.
Right.
And so maybe there's ways to do that where you have staggered development. So the higher development is further away from where that low-density, single-family homes are. So there's several ways that could be done.
Okay. Thank you, Ray.
Member Robinson.
Yes. My thoughts on it, one, over on Brown Street, we'll talk about that, and I know that the, the streets, they're not that wide, and, and you just stated that they're going to be parking on the street. You approve that, and they're not going to have any parking, as I understand it, in the mix of the units themselves. So, and taking that and going with, over to Elizabeth Street, looking at this, the rendition, the picture, and, and I was, I listened to a lot of this when it was being, being put out there, and there was, as you stated, there was a few concerns, not many, a few concerns. But how, how narrow is Elizabeth Street going to become if you do something like this? Are they going to, with the entryway or into the garages, as I see it in the front, coming from Elizabeth Street and coming from Maxwell, I think it is, the other street as well?
So that development, they're not going to impact Elizabeth Avenue or Whispering Hills. The width of those roads will still, stay the same. The buildings themselves will be twenty feet away from the public right-of-way. So, I think they're, I think we measured twelve feet from the pavement, and then there's an extra twenty feet to the front doors.
Okay.
And then there would be, there is a driveway that will go into internal to the site to allow everybody to access the rear garages, and that roadway was approved to be twenty feet wide as far as the pavement itself.
Right.
So they did have to go through some administrative waiver and variance processes to allow those things.
Okay. How did we get resolved with the, the entryway on the Elizabeth Avenue with the houses that are south of that, when they were going to get, how did we get that resolved?
So there, there are some lots south of this develop, that particular development that were landlocked, and were using, I guess, an informal driveway on to this, through this property. The developer of this development is proposing a cross-access easement on their property to allow those people to continue to access out onto Elizabeth Avenue. So that'll be approved with the site plan.
Yeah, and, and just, it's question, but it is something that's going to have to happen as, as we, we're going to have to go up or, you know, we just don't have enough land left in certain areas to build affordable houses. So this, it's going to have to be some consideration adjustments like you're making here in that, in these two particular cases. For me, with the Brown Avenue more so than the Elizabeth, and I remember what was there and the twenty-four units that was there, and they were about the size of Max's Matchbox. I don't see how anyone lived in them, but they did, and they called them two-bedrooms. Some of them would say, you know, something was too big, and I don't, and I, and I remember going in them as well, as, you know, being, delivering furniture and, and stuff to them. But I know that it's going to have to be a lot of, you guys are going to have a lot of work ahead of you to, to make it work and try to get, keep people as, or families as far away from each other as you possibly can. That's, that's going to be the key is that, you know, how do you do this and come up with these, these plans and, and put them in place and, and not come up with something that, that used to be on, on the corner of Queens and, what is it, Queen and DeLeon, which is now Inspiration Point, that looked like a prison. That's when I first moved here, I thought that it was, you know, a, a prison because the way they built them. They have to have some aesthetic value to them at the same time giving, giving, giving way to, uh, uh, privacy. And that's going to be, that's going to be hard, hard to do without changing the variances, without making some considerations. But you still want to keep, keep that in mind as well as you make the changes, minimizing the variances because the variances were put into place to give consideration to the fact that the old laws is that you, life is about what you own and you want to own as much as you can to do that. That's, that's all I have to, but I think that if we get to some point that we, we have more, I think it's a, I think that by, by piece of land in the front of, um, Palmetto, right there on DeLeon, the new apartment.
Yes. The, um...
Is it Palmetto range? No, what is it?
It was a senior housing.
Yeah, yeah, it's a senior, the ones in front of those apartments that they built back in the back there.
No, I'm not, I'm not thinking the same one.
What is it? Panita? What is, what is it? On DeLeon, about six hundred, DeLeon Street, right across from the apartment that Pastor Dane's on.
Oh, oh, yes. Palmer, yeah. That, that, Palmer complex.
Yeah, it's Palmetto. They got a lot of land and they were going to build.
Yes.
Because they flew in to speak to me, the owner, that they were going to build condos and things out in the front of that. And, and I think that they went into some problems with variances and, and who was going to buy them as well. As I spoke to them years ago, they were saying they were hoping people out of Orlando was going to move into those units because they were all supposed to be sold. And, and I said, you've got to be kidding and, but again, the housing market has changed, land has changed, it's not as much available that it used to be, but it's enough land out there to do it. And I don't know whether the, the owners of that property are going to do anything in the future with it as well. But it was, they had a nice concept that they were going to do in that, but that's a nice place if you are looking for something that, somebody to work on right there in front of those apartments.
Okay. As an example.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor.
I think this is me. I hope it is. Brad, go back to the fifth image, your fifth slide.
Bring the presentation back up.
Yeah. And I have to say, I really don't like the parking on the street.
Okay.
I don't know, the, the plan on the left side to me makes more sense. And I guess my problem with the parking on the street is, you know, streets there to be driven on, you know, you're looking at potential for accidents and other problems vandalism.
Okay.
And so to me that, just burglaries, car burglaries, which we all know way too well. So to me that, that plan on the left makes much more sense. So I don't know if they're willing to reverse it and go back to the left-hand side, but I sure like the left-hand side better.
This one, this one was already approved, so it went through the process. And just so you know, that the image of it on the left would have required several variances too. So we were trying to minimize the number of variances with the back and forth. And that's what we ended up with on, on the right. So, okay.
Can I say drat?
I'm sorry?
Can I say drat?
You do.
So you're not in favor of the on-street parking as an option?
No, but the other thing that I was thinking about looking at slide eight is, I like that concept of the apartments on the left-hand side with the trees shading that sidewalk.
Okay.
So I'm sitting here thinking, you know, and tweaking maybe landscaping requirements, maybe concentrating more on trees as opposed to brush. Because as a kid, I'd much rather go out there and play against a big tree in the summer.
Okay.
I'd rather play out there under that than try to go, ooh, that bush is making everything cool. And I agree, affordable housing needs to be a priority.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and I would say, Brad, before we go further, that the, your presentation was outstanding. I feel like we have a handle on kind of where you're headed, what you're doing. But I also think that what the council people have said, Member Jordan's concern about multifamily right next to a single-family and how you do that's tricky. And then I really think, you know, it's not something you necessarily talk about a lot in a council meeting, but Member Robinson used the word privacy. I really think that there has to be the exact same consideration for this housing as any other housing we would do anywhere else. And I, I think that's a big deal, but I think the fact that we're looking at this and your presentation started with the concerns we have, I appreciate that. Member Stokoe.
Yep. So I've seen this type of development in other cities, definitely. I guess so for moving forward, do you guys have a plan for where you envision this type of development to be? Like, these are two different locations here, but like, moving forward in the future, where, what areas of Titusville do you think this development would be appropriate? Or have we got that far yet?
So my, my initial thought is that the, like I explained at the beginning here, there's two types of development patterns in the city. You've got the older core of the city, which is that gridded pattern, blocks, four hundred feet length. Some parcels in there have three sides to them. And so you're trying to figure out what's the front, what's the side, what's the rear? And you're trying, and the code doesn't make any exceptions. It just says this, you have to abide, abide or apply a different standard for each side. And a lot of the, the standards that are inside the code right now, for example, the deep buffer requirements are typical of what you find in suburban-style development. So if you're building a brand-new subdivision out along an arterial with one or two entryways going in, it's easy to apply, but it's difficult to apply that same standard to parcels that are in this block, gridded area of our city. And that applies to downtown, which has its own zoning code to address that issue, and other parts of the city that do not. So like this area to the west of downtown and even to the northwest of downtown, it's difficult to apply the code that we have right now without having to require an applicant to go through waivers or variances in order to meet the code.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, right now, for this type of development, it's difficult to do this anywhere in the city just based on how our code is now?
It has, I'm not saying it's impossible, I'm just saying that, that the, it's, we've been finding that a lot of the requests that come in have, the applicants have found it very difficult to apply our code because of the way it's written for, it's tailor-made for a certain type of development.
With this, yes, this type of development's relatively new, I feel like. So I guess moving forward, if we do want to have some of this type of development, what would be the best approach? Because kind of to what Member Jordan was saying, is the best approach putting it right across from like R one B and like, does that make sense or have we got that far yet?
So the example with the Elizabeth, the, the townhomes on Elizabeth Avenue, that property was already zoned for multifamily.
Okay.
And on the, across the street, the properties are zoned for single-family. So you have a lot of examples like that in the city where one block is multifamily and across the street is a block that's single-family. Or sometimes adjacent to each other on the same block. And it seems that it was kind of haphazardly put over. There's some areas, it seems like it's logical because they've got huge, several blocks in one area with that one zoning, but other areas you have on the same block, a different hodgepodge of things going on. So the entitlement is there, for example, in this particular project. The issue was they couldn't do a townhome development. They could have done a multifamily development, kind of like what I showed you on Brown Avenue, by right, but they couldn't do a townhome development, only because a few years ago there was a regulation code that you had to have minimum five acres for townhome development. So it even restricted the number, but the type of development you could put on this particular property. We thought that a high-rise multifamily development across the street from a single-family home was probably inappropriate and that it was more compatible to put a townhome development, which the code didn't allow at that time. So there's a lot of examples like that. And we would think that we would like, based on your input, would come back to you with some direction of how we would like to go forward and present to you possibly an ordinance that addresses a variety of different things and how we're going to make some changes.
Yeah, that's what I would like to see. I know, I don't know about the other council members. I think part of my frustration sometimes when we have new projects coming before us, it's like we're looking at one piece of land or one piece of property and I like to see it within the context of our overall vision, I guess, of how, yes, this is perfect for this area, this is what we're looking for, we're looking for multifamily in this area, we're wanting to keep this certain type of residential so like the whole city as a whole has a cohesive look and it doesn't, nobody's driving by me like, ooh, that's a weird location for that. So that's, yeah, that's mine.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? I see none. I see none again. So with that, thank you so very much. City Manager.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council, we're on to Agenda Item 4B, which is the Titusville Sustainability Action Plan. And our city staff will provide a presentation to you. No actions required on this presentation.
I'm going to stand because it helps me present better.
There you go.
Hi, I'm Rachel. I'm the city's new sustainability planner and right now, the city is currently working on drafting the Sustainability Action Plan. And that's what I'm going to present to you all about. So to start, first, we're going to define sustainability and go into more depth about what that means for the city. So the United Nations defines sustainability as meeting the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. So how can we better plan for today while also accounting for what's going to happen tomorrow? So within that, there are three pillars. The first pillar is social equity. How do, how do we lift up all people through sustainability? The second is the economy and our economic needs. How can we grow in a sustainable manner? The third is the environment in our natural ecosystems. So how can we be better environmental stewards to this land that we live on? And how do we do that for today and for tomorrow? So that's what sustainability is about. So within each of those pillars, we can look at certain items, action items where we can plan for. So if we're looking at the social pillar, we can plan for a valued education system, quality health and facilities, safe streets, homes and workplaces, diversity and being a proactive government. From the economic pillar, we can look at how can we be proper fiscal management? How can we increase employment and training? How can we improve our standard of living? How can we increase homeownership, business diversity and proper resource management? And then when we look at the environmental pillar, we want to look at how can we be better stewards to the environment through water conservation, energy efficiency, waste reduction, biodiversity, land preservation and resource protection? So there is a whole lot that sustainability can touch and impact. It, it impacts every single aspect of our lives and the point of it is to create a balance. How do we create a balance in the lives that we live? So the city has currently been working on sustainability efforts. This isn't new for the city of Titusville. We've done previous efforts and in twenty eighteen completed a sustainability inventory, which include things from energy reductions to emission reductions to water conservation and waste recycling. So some of the actions that the city has already completed include putting LED light bulbs into most of our facilities, putting all our light bulbs onto timers so that when no one's in the room, they automatically shut off, reducing our fleet vehicle emissions by purchasing vehicles that get better gas mileage, waste recycling by having many of our departments do coordinated recycling systems, water conservation by providing rebates to customers that allow them to do low-flow faucets in their homes. So the city has done numerous activities already to demonstrate that we are, we are actively pursuing sustainability initiatives that not only help the environment, but they are proper economic decisions and they promote social responsibility. So now the city is currently working on a Sustainability Action Plan to help us pursue sustainability moving forward. So currently, we are in Phase One of the Sustainability Action Plan where we're trying to identify our focus areas for study. These focus areas will help us to coordinate and to hone in on the specific issues we want the city to address. Because as I previously mentioned, sustainability touches every single corner of our lives. So within our plan for how we plan for sustainability, we have to come up with focus areas. One of those focus areas could be housing, like we just heard about. The city, like all, many cities across the country, are facing a housing shortage and housing costs are skyrocketing. How do we plan for sustainable housing? That's a potential focus area. Energy efficiency, that's a potential focus area. Water conservation and being water stewards, that's a potential focus area. But how do we determine what those focus areas are? We do that through community engagement, which is what we're really focusing on right now, making sure that the community is aware of sustainability and how the city can plan for sustainability and to let us know how they would like to see us do that. And once we're done with the focus areas, we can get into the composition and adoption of a Sustainability Action Plan. And what that means is it'll create short-term and long-term strategies and initiatives for us to develop in a sustainable manner. So what have we done already within this Phase One? We did a Chamber of Commerce luncheon where we presented to many of the business community about the Sustainability Action Plan. That was on November tenth. We completed a stakeholder meeting with, with stakeholders throughout the community that represented the three pillars of sustainability. We had representatives from the Sierra Club to represent the environmental pillar. We had representatives for the economic development pillar, including the North Brevard Economic Development Zone and the Chamber of Commerce. And we even had representatives for the social pillar, including the Gibson Center. So we got all of the stakeholders together in a room to discuss what sustainability meant for them and how they want to see this, how they would like the city to pursue it moving forward. It doesn't, this wasn't updated, but the Christmas Craft Festival was just this past Saturday and I was there with our, the city's consultant, S and M E. And together we had a booth where people who attended the craft festival could come up and talk with us about sustainability. We had a fun little game for the kids to play, a Plinko board and whatever, wherever it landed, we'd ask them a fun little question. You know, we would ask them, what are different types of renewable energy or how can you conserve water at home? And the correct answer was turning off the faucet when you brush your teeth. So it was really fun to get kids engaged in the process as well. And then we also got adults to take our survey, our online survey, and just had really great, robust conversations with the community about sustainability and it was very well-received. Then next up, the final, final leg of the community engagement is going to be a public workshop on December ninth, six P M., says City Hall Council Chambers, but it's being relocated to here in the Fire Department. That event will be hybrid. You can join via Teams for those who, who feel more safe that way or can't attend an evening workshop. So the stakeholder meeting was also hybrid as well for, for that accommodation. And that'll wrap up the public engagement portion of the Sustainability Action Plan. What are other ways that you could participate in Phase One of the Sustainability Action Plan? We have a project website through Social Pinpoint. And on that project website, that's how you'll be able to access the Teams meeting on December ninth. We also have an online survey, which I encourage you all to take and tell your friends, your family and your neighbors to take as well. The more responses we get to the survey, the better we'll be able to understand the community, the community's needs and how they would like us to grow sustainably. And then finally, we have an idea wall. And this is where we can have... And then finally, we have an Idea Wall, and this is where we can have conversations and discussions about sustainability. If you go and check out the Idea Wall, you'll see that we already have some really great conversations started where someone has recommended, for example, um, having our buildings be LEED certified or to LEED standards, someone else mentioned doing a living shoreline project. And you can go in and you can like a comment, you can dislike a comment, and you can reply to comments as well. So the Idea Wall is a really great way where we can foster conversations online about sustainability in an organized and moderated fashion. Um, so you can access the website through scanning the U.R. or scanning the QR code or typing into your web browser, tinyurl.com/titusvillesap. SAP stands for Sustainability Action Plan. And so that's where we are currently with the Sustainability Action Plan. Thank you all for letting me present to you today, and I will try my best to answer any questions if you have any.
Well, first of all, I would say that I was at the chamber presentation, and then for you to do this now, I think the word that does come to mind is conversation, because even after the chamber meeting, I, part of it was with you all, um, there's a lot of people who hadn't really thought about the sustainability, um, and certainly didn't realize the different tiers that there were and the different, uh, legs to it. So I think it's an outstanding initiative, and it's one of those things where I like to use the term "ahead of the curve." I feel like something like this gets us ahead of the curve, at least to start talking about it. So with that, I appreciate it. Council, are there any questions? I see none. Thank you very much, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
City Manager?
Yes, sir, Item 4C is the letters of appreciations that we've received for, if all our employees, I'd like to read their names for the record. From Community Development, Mr. Timothy Ford, Eddie Galindo, Mariana Hestrova, Kobwana Ufuso, and Bradley Parrish. From Utility Engineering Department, Ashley Smith. From the City Attorney's Office, Chelsea Farrell. And from Public Works Department, Sandy Reller.
Excellent, excellent. I sometimes wish we could read all the letters and all those things because obviously to have a letter written, that means you did something above and beyond and somebody noticed. But with that said, my hat's off to you all. And now we move to petitions and requests, correct? Yes, petitions and requests.
I'm taking this to the next meeting. Stan Johnston, eight sixty points at Avenue. Uh, I wish I certainly had more time because, uh, I've, I've written a lot about these, uh, two, uh, 4A and 4B, and, uh, there was nothing seemed to be addressed. I mean, I wrote extensively on that, I've done extensive work on these items and, and the staff hasn't addressed them. Uh, especially, for example, is that, uh, I sent it also to you, and that is, for example, I went out and did some field observations myself, I'm a registered surveyor and registered landsurier, and you can see the red marks on that, that's for the survey. And I have already sent a complaint to the Florida Board of Professional Surveyors that this survey does not meet minimum technical standards, and apparently nobody has read my letter regarding this, but, uh, I've sent it to you and I've sent it, and staff should certainly know about it. But, uh, the staff has claimed that, that that dirt access is, uh, and the lot, the four lots, uh, not the four lots, but three lots are, are landlocked. Well, I, I wish they would talk to the owners of those lots, because at, at least one owner has talked to me and said, "Well, my goodness, the, the city uses, uses the garbage trucks to access that," and then the fire trucks have been, uh, say that they can access that, and, and now we're gonna make it a, a one lane. And actually, there's four lots that, that, that access, because the lot on the corner also accesses, so we have a, uh, an access that is, um, accesses four lots. And you're gonna turn it into like an eight-foot wide, and you can't, you can't go past eight-foot wide one-way dead-end street, that's what the street signs say. When you have a street sign out there, doesn't even, the site plan doesn't recognize the street signs, dead-end, stop sign, doesn't even recognize that. That's, as far as that concerns, that's, that's not allowed. You've got to recognize these things. And, uh, so I, I, I did a request for records about, well, has the city ever maintained that? Well, the city doesn't have records on that. However, Mr. Parrish and so forth, they should go out there and find out, is that those, those residents claimed that the city has been maintaining those things before it was paved, that Elizabeth Avenue was paved as a concrete road. And as a, as experienced with the city of Titusville and Brevard County, and when, when a, when a, when the public maintains a road, they can gain ownership of that road, or that access. In other words, so, so it appears to me is that actually, this is not only not this landlocked, it's a public access. And right now, I think you should listen to this, is that, is that right now is for most, all the, the, all the way on the length of that, is you can have two-way traffic. In other words, uh, vehicles that meet each other, one can go to the side. And, and now we're gonna convert it to, we're gonna make it eight-foot wide or so and make it so people, cars cannot go two-way. So how are we gonna get ambulances in there, back and forth? I think, I, I, I'm gonna ask for at least two more minutes on this.
Do I see any? I see none. Thanks, Stan.
Thank you for being interested in this.
Thank you.
You're not interested.
Any other petitions or requests at this meeting? I see none. Anything over here? Anything else? We will reconvene at six-thirty. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.